Then the, the issue goes to the county superintendent. So that's why we are, have these timelines scheduled as such. So July 6 would be the deadline for anyone to apply for that open seat. We're asking you to hold on your calendars, a placeholder for a special board meeting at 6:00 PM on July 8. Probably a virtual meeting, just because it could be that, you know, with that being the, sort of the week of July 4th, there might be a lot of people traveling. So we would ask for you just to hold that as a placeholder. If we have some applicants, we will know by July 6th if we have any applicants, then we would move forward with that special board meeting. If we did not have any applicants on July 6th, then we would cancel that meeting on July 8. We are asking that you schedule one regular July board meeting. I know that in most months, we have two board meetings, but just with the way the summer schedules work out and with people being out and about during this time, we are asking to have one regular board meeting in July. That would be July 20th at 6:00 PM. Then the August board meetings always get a little bit messed up because of the budget calendar. So by state law, we have to adopt a budget no later than August 20th. And so we'd like to have our regular board meeting on August 10th. That's the second Tuesday of the month. But rather than having our second board meeting on the fourth Tuesday, we want to move it up to the Thursday before that. So rather than having an August 24th board meeting, we would have it on August 19th, same time, 6 o'clock. It's a Thursday. That would be a special meeting, a special board meeting for the adoption of our, our budget for the next school year. That's all I have.
Thank you, Rob. Are there any questions for Rob from the trustees? Okay, our next item then is the, we have, yeah, we've dropped the announcements in the vice chair. We'll pick that up next time. The next agenda item seven is the consent agenda. These are items that appear routinely, and so we just pass them kind of as a group. Any trustee can pull these off at the beginning of the meeting, and you, you could do it now if you wanted, just because we're not used to this. But, so we have, we're going to acknowledge MCPS student attendance agreements for students that are attending other districts or attending our district. We're going to approve the revenue and expenditure reports for the elementary and approve the revenue and expenditure reports for the secondary, which is the high school. Just a second. Okay, so we're going to vote consent agenda items A1 and 2 together. All trustees supporting the agenda items A1 and 2, please signify by raising your hand. And let's see. Yeah, those are elementary action items, so. You're not in on this one, Mike. Okay. And then the second agenda item A3 is a secondary agenda item to approve the revenue and expenditure reports for the high school district. So all trustees favor item 3, please signify by raising your hand. And I assume Mike's on that one. Yeah, there you go. Okay, thanks. Then we're moving on to old business. This is the second part of our review of the International Baccalaureate Program. And that will be presented by Russ Lodge and Elise Guest.
Yes, and just by way of introduction of this item, just remind the trustees that we started this review process at the last meeting, and we did mention it was a two-part process. We wanted to explain, first of all, sort of the process that was used to research this topic. And then the second part of this is, it was really quite short. We wanted to talk about some of the insights that came out of the task force. And so Dr. Guest and Assistant Superintendent Lodge will discuss some of the insights that came from the task force. I want the board to know that using these insights and talking with Dr. Guest and Assistant Superintendent Lodge, we formulated some recommendations for board's consideration. I split the recommendations into two separate items because we believe that there is rationale to have sort of a different recommendation for the two different districts, the elementary district and the high school district. So you can see those recommendations that I've outlined there. And as always with our recommendations, that's all they are, simply recommendations. We, we're looking for board direction regarding this issue. And so the recommendations that I crafted are, are fairly specific, but it gives us some, some direction as we move into the next school year. So Assistant Superintendent Lodge, you ready?
Yeah, thank you. Dr. Guest and I are glad to be back so we can kind of finish up our presentation to you and have the opportunity to present kind of these findings. I'm going to begin though by asking Dr. Guest, Elise, to do a very quick wrap-up on the process, just to bring it back into your memory bank with our task force. And just a little quick reminder here, we won't be long about how we got to this point. And then we're going to jump into the slide that you see on the screen and, and you might have in front of you. So, Dr. Guest?
Yeah, I think as we just reconnect back to the process that we used, to remind everyone that we really feel proud of the fact that it was an evidence-based process used to really evaluate an implementation of an initiative. And so after nine, 10 years of implementing IB and really looking at the past strategic plan for Achievement For All, it was a great opportunity to see how we're doing and really get some information to inform next steps. So the data we used throughout the process was first the empathy interviews. And we had over 52 individual one-on-one 30-minute conversations with a wide variety of stakeholders. We had focus groups with parents and students at all of our buildings that are currently actively implementing IB. We also looked to our colleagues and experts at International Baccalaureate Organization, University of Montana, and the Washington Foundation. And together, we brought all of that information, in addition to the financial records, to a task force, a group of teachers from across our district who came together. They opted in and said, "We're really interested in helping to provide a recommendation and answer those three main questions." Whether or not our students were engaged through an innovative initiative, whether or not we were promoting those 21st century skills and knowledge, and, and looking at then, how are we supporting that notion of equity and access for all students across our district? And so with that task force, we used the Hexagon tool, which you guys kind of heard about in the last presentation. And I think the things that I'd want to really resonate with you is that there was six main components that we looked at in evaluating the initiative. And so some were specific to the actual program, like whether or not IB is good for MCPS. And we looked at evidence for that, whether or not there was a sense of usability for it here, and whether or not we had supports to really implement it with quality and fidelity. And then there's also other indicators just around MCPS, like whether or not there was the need. Do we present a need for something like, a program like IB? Is it a good fit for our community? And then also, do we have the capacity to implement it and implement it well and then sustain it? So those are the six indicators we came to look deeper into. And so up on the screen, and I apologize for the tiny, tiny font, but what you can see is the specific statements that the task force came to agree upon in their writing. And when I say agree upon, we went through a really robust consensus-building protocol that Hatton Lippman helped to facilitate, to ensure that the words here really represent the work of the task force and that it really represents our thoughts in our, our day's work in evaluating that data. So with the consensus process, we went around and every time people had to give a thumbs up sideways or down. And if there was ever even a sideways, we stopped, we talked, we reevaluated, we amended, we modified, until we could get that full consensus. And the result of that full consensus was something that I'm really proud of and sharing is that as we went around the room and talked about the process and, and how people felt about it and how they connected with it, this was one of the first times in a, in a year of a pandemic to hear teachers say, "This was an amazing process. I feel really good about it. This was something that I feel really engaged in professionally and feel satisfied about that. This is the first time I'm able to connect with my colleagues again in person and, and really honor like all of the expertise in the room." And so I share that with you because the task force members really walked away feeling proud of their involvement and their contributions. And that's then what you see up on the screen. So I want to commend the task force members, and their names are written in the previous presentation we shared last time.
And Dr. Guest, I know it's small on the screen, but it's also repeated on page 28 of the, of the agenda for the board members.
Yeah, exactly. So we're happy to dig into this, to answer questions, to, to carry that conversation and process forward.
So what I'd like to do is just quickly go through the highlights, and then maybe we can engage in some conversation if people have questions. So the first one, the need, IB does meet the needs of the school communities, but is not accessible to all students in K-12. Another small group talked about evidence. It does develop 21st century skills. The pedagogy approaches to learning, the profile, the IB curriculum and the units of inquiry. There has been demonstrated student engagement, which was good to see. Under fit, it is embedded in our district. It aligns culturally, philosophically within our community. It's inquiry-based, and it intersects with other district initiatives. Usability, it's well-defined. It allows adaptations for context in all populations. Under capacity, we do have the capacity to sustain current IB programming because our leadership, our staff are highly knowledgeable about the program. And under support, ongoing funding is necessary to sustain it. The PD, the new staff orientation, the fees, the materials. But of course, you know that our SHAPE 21st grant is sunsetting. So we're, as we sit here, we're a little unsure where some funding will come from in the future. So quickly, because you can all read.
Can I, can I interrupt? Sorry to interrupt.
You certainly can interrupt.
One thing for the trustees, at the top where it's old business, teaching and learning, item I, it says it's information only, but in fact, we will be directing the administration. We will be voting tonight. So if, if, you know, if you have any questions at all or anything you want to know, be sure and ask.
Yeah, so that, that is the insights. After all that work and that time, and this is what our task force came up with. I know we had a conversation, it's been a month ago because we missed a meeting, but if you want to engage in any conversation, it could be about that. It could be about the recommendations, whatever, whatever you choose.
Thank you, Dr. Guest and Mr. Lodge. I guess before we start with the open, or the, the board conversation, can you kind of tell us, what are we looking at financially? What, what do these numbers mean to us?
Well, basically, on the front page that you're looking at, you've got about, over the 10, over the seven to eight years that are there, about two-thirds of the funding came out of the general fund, and about one-third of the funding came out of the grant. It changed year to year, but I think you're going to see, if I did my math right, $700,000, and then the total funding was 2.7 million. So maybe a little more than two-thirds, probably in the 75% range. And the grant, of course, always paid for professional development, and I think some of the fees. And then the general fund paid basically for staffing. So, and Dr. Guest?
If I could add to that, the, the intent of the SHAPE grant, or now known as 21st Century Grant, is to, was to start up and seed the innovation that came out of Achievement For All. And so anytime that we initiated a new class, say at Hellgater, Big Sky, then the grant would help purchase the textbooks and the curriculum materials as well as ensure that the teacher was trained. When we looked to Washington Middle School to connect the elementary and high school, they were in candidacy fees, so the grant helps to pay that candidacy fee until it gets accredited and upon which then the general fund takes over the accreditation. So it's always that startup kind of seed money to the innovation and the, the startup of the coursework or training that was needed for becoming an IB school.
Okay, thanks. Do any trustees have any questions they'd like to ask or at this time? Trustee Mercer?
Almost always. So is that $60,000 shortfall that in August, you're going to want to be filling in to continue this program if we recommend continuing it?
Correct.
And I guess the second question, two questions to serve together. AP costs money too. Why does Hellgate get two things and the others get one? Why are we spending more money for IB at Hellgate than at Big Sky? And Hellgate also has AP.
I think it's historical is the answer. I can answer that because I was the principal of Hellgate High School when IB was initiated. And the decision at that time was to keep both advanced placement programs, and it has just stayed. And I think that's probably the bottom-line answer. IB has grown at Hellgate, but some AP classes have been added too. In the meantime, Sentinel was AP, and of course, Big Sky is moving to be entirely IB. But that's just what Hellgate has had over the last 10 years. And I don't think there was any specific reason other than the idea that they wanted both programs to be there. That's how it took off, and I think it's continued over the last eight, nine, 10 years.
And I guess it's my understanding there aren't fees associated with AP. There's not a coordinator position, so it actually isn't an additional cost, is it?
Like, can I, can I answer that? So I want to step back too and talk briefly about Trustee Mercer's question. So proportionally, Trustee Mercer, and we could actually look at the course offerings. I think what you'd find is the course offerings are about the same. That is to say, we're not duplicating AP and IB courses at Big Sky. So I think the direction of IB at Hellgate is more in the humanities area, where the science and math offerings at, at Hellgate are in the AP area. So that would be one thing we can look into. But it's my understanding we're not duplicating that, those courses. And then to answer Chair Lorenzen's question, so the, the costs related to AP, we haven't studied that yet. And I think, to be fair, I think we need to do that. I think we need to come back to the board at sometime this next year and, and talk about the costs associated to AP. There are costs. I don't know how much they compare or don't compare to the IB costs. While we don't need a coordinator for, for IB, or I'm sorry, for AP, we do have, we do have a lot of tests that are now given at Sentinel because of the growth of their AP program. All of those tests require proctors and a coordination that currently happens with Sentinel staff. And so there is some, there is some human cost to, to run an AP program, especially the one that, as large as the one is, is at Sentinel.
Yeah, I think Trustee McDonald had a question?
So what is the basic difference between AP and IB?
Well, I, I think that's a, a large conversation. But in essence, with IB, there's definitely a promotion to interdisciplinary approach. There's an essence of critical thinking and application at a global level. People will then compare that to AP and say it's more of a traditional application of that learning rather than the kind of interdisciplinary approach to it. There could be a lot more said, but I'll wait and leave it at that for now.
And what's interesting about the two programs is as, as they've grown over the years, they're starting to look a lot more alike than they are different. So AP has now integrated, you know, that theory of knowledge class and that capstone project. So the two programs actually are looking a lot more similar than they are different. So it is really, it comes down to, to a little bit about preference at the school level, which direction the school wants to go.
And I guess I'll call on Trustee Havens, but I guess we need to remember there is no AP in elementary. So when we're talking AP versus IB, we're strictly talking high school there. So go ahead, Nancy.
Thanks, guys. Well, I just, I guess my broad concern is, it seems like the schools that have the IB program really like the IB program. There's a lot of buy-in from parents, staff, et cetera. But the accessibility to all is what I keep like underlining. And my question is, kind of like stepping back, do all the schools that want to have the IB program have the IB program?
That's a tough question to answer. I mean, the equity piece is there at the high school level because between eighth and ninth grade, kids can apply to go to a different high school. Then the ability to have it at different elementary buildings over the last six, seven, eight years, each elementary building has kind of taken its own path. So whether, whether the board ever said seven years ago, "If anybody wants it, raise your hand", I don't know, and I don't, I don't think that occurred. So I think it depends a little bit on the path of each school at the time. And that's one of the things we talked about a few weeks ago, is coming back to you perhaps with the story of each elementary building. Or even having, better yet, having the board go to the elementary building and talk to the people and the principals and get a really good understanding of what's there and why it's there. So I don't know, I don't know if I answered your question.
Can I just follow up real quick?
Go ahead.
Well, so I, I guess it was so apparent that, you know, like Franklin Elementary was really, you know, invested in this, you know? And I just wonder if it hasn't been kind of put out there to other schools at this point. And we're talking about, you know, funding the, the current programming that we have. Is that enough? Or do we want to be expanding it and offering it to more schools that might be interested in it?
I think what resonates with me with that question is when we heard from a teacher from Lewis and Clark, and she spoke about how proud she is that back when the Achievement For All plan was being written, there was a request for, for teachers to look into different innovative initiatives, IB being one of them. And at Lewis and Clark, a teacher was interested and wound up sharing with her colleagues, and thus it became a grassroots essence at Lewis and Clark. A very similar process happened then, fast forward a few years, at Big Sky, that they're very proud of, how it was a grassroots group of teachers who began to be invited to go look at IB and to join in some professional development, brought it back to their peers, and were like, "This is some great stuff." And then from there, it grew. And we heard that resoundingly in our empathy interviews and then in some public comment in, in the last board meeting. The process wasn't as similar to that at Hellgate, and I think we heard that in our empathy interviews. And then for Washington, it was a little bit of both, but there was also the, the stress point of knowing that students from the dual-language school were coming in. And so IB was a way to kind of encapsulate the Lewis and Clark students, the Paxton students, and then join in with the Rattlesnake students, so.
Hatton's waving her hand.
Oh, thank you.
We call him Hatton.
Elise expanded effectively on that. And I just wanted to add that when we brought the task force together, those members that were identified, they all affirmed how much staff buy-in was essential to this because it is, you know, it's a lift to implement any program. This is not unique to IB. So our other schools, as, as Russ alluded to, that have implemented other themes or programs in their schools, especially at the elementary level, there's a lot of staff buy-in for that. And our task force did acknowledge that's essential. In this case, we were looking at IB. But I think that has been a narrative of all of the different programs that have been implemented under the Achievement For All plan is that staff buy-in is really critical.
Thanks, Hatton. I think Tracy Decker was up?
Thanks. It's, it's such a complex issue, and it, it raised, like, people have so many questions and honestly, so many misperceptions about the whole thing. IB at high school is an entirely different beast than what IB in the elementary years even is, the goals of what it's about, how people participate, all of that. So it's really, it's difficult to even have a conversation about IB just generally across our district because it means something very different at all the different levels. And I really hear what Trustee Havens is saying, that for the most part, staff who are involved in IB programs feel that they are huge value adds to their work. It takes their professionalism, their ability to engage kids to the next level, which is awesome. I feel like as a board, and I'm wondering, I'm sort of getting to this, I think, I'm wondering if what we should be paying attention to is the investments that we're making in that kind of engagement and professionalism, and whether we feel like every school would say with as much enthusiasm that that is true of what happens every single day in their school. And I feel like what we need to be paying attention to is what we spend per student across our district and how that plays out in the kinds of supports and opportunities that those students are, are getting. And I don't know in these, in the financial breakdowns that you've made available, if we're able to understand how this differs from what is spent in other schools or at other schools. How, how many of these schools are title schools? And whether that, that need to get kids to the ground floor through title funding and then look at what this looks like in terms of a supplement from our general fund over and above, this is what we're spending out of our general fund, how that all connects the dots together? I'm curious about whether, and that, that all makes me, makes me want to just take this conversation deeper. Sorry, that was more of a comment, I guess.
No, I, I think it's fine, and I think Russ, do you have something to help?
Well, I, I agree with you, and that's the engagement piece that kind of heard from you at the last board meeting that we need to investigate next year is what's the story at the other schools? And what's their professional engagement? And what is leading the charge? And where's their investments? And then we can, without that, it's hard to compare if you haven't taken a pretty good look at it. So I, I agree with your comments.
Thanks, Russ. Trustee Oldperson?
Thanks, Chair Lorenzen. One of the things I see when we're talking about this is the inequities that Trustee Decker and Havens were pointing at across. And I do see that it was staff buy-in, but it was also the administration and the board who allowed it to go forward in creating this and not seeing the need for it at other schools, at title schools, or how it impacted BIPOC or underserved students. And that's what I see is, I think that's one thing I want to see, is how much money we're spending on a student at Franklin, at Lewis and Clark versus Russell and Lowell. I want to make sure that we're equal in how we are presenting education opportunities to our students. And I think that's some that should be, because I know at the last meeting you talked about, "We'll give us direction." And I think that's where we really stepped up and we wanted, we had the ad hoc committee going because we, we see the inequity. And that's what it is, is inequity on how we're serving some of our students.
And we would be glad to do that work. I think it's going to take next year to do it. But I think that's a great direction for us to go and give you a broader perspective.
Thanks. Go ahead.
Thanks for a quick follow-up. And one other thing I wanted to see is barriers. I don't see that really in this form. And I, in terms of like task force too, I would want to see that opened up more because in public comment, the last meeting, we heard that certain, certain people were not invited, other families, that it was very limited. And I would like to see that opened up more and include more people from different backgrounds. And I want to see more of what the barriers are.
Thanks. Trustee Mercer?
So what I was over talking about, Pat, during the break, is whether the plausibility of, so I guess I would want us to make a specific number request. I would like to know the average per student general fund, not title, broken down by school. And maybe it turns out it's really even. I mean, I, I have no idea. It seems like a baseline transparent number to see what the resources we are choosing to distribute. So I guess that's, I don't know if that's a formal request. My other, this I guess serve a comment too. I certainly appreciate the way Trustee Havens put it about what other schools might want this. But I think there's also a question, does every school that we want to have it, have it? And I think, yes, staff buy-in's important, but at some point, it is not acceptable. I'm not saying any school in this district would do that, but it would not be acceptable for a school just to say, "No, we don't want anything. Peace out." And the administration just to say, "That's okay. You can just underperform," right? So I get the buy-in, but buy-in is also something that needs to be generated, right? And I'm not saying IB is for everyone, but it is, I think, the district's obligation to get every school excited about something that fits for them. Not a question, sorry.
Trustee of Garris?
Thank you. Yeah, so, so I hear what you're saying, Cohen, and I, I agree on a certain level. And I guess it's kind of a comment, not a question, but the, each school takes it differently. Not every school wants to be IB. There's schools that are, that focus on STEM or STEAM. There's, you know, so there's different focuses that are going to have different teachers doing different things. And that's, goes back to what, what the original plan was, is a few schools are doing IB, a few schools are doing other programs. It just sounds like we've kind of... It just sounds like we've kind of lost the way with some other schools. So I agree with you, the first half of what you said, 100%. We need to figure out how these programs are working, what programs are still working, how our funds are being distributed per student across the board. And I have confidence that we probably are doing a pretty good job with that. Each school probably has its own budget, so we probably see that fairly closely. But we'd love, and I think it was a great idea to see that and have an idea of that without completely micromanaging our administration.
Mr. Loes, did you want to respond?
I just want to respond to the one statement, and I am trying to be general on purpose, but we have elementary schools performing quite well without any specific kind of programming other than kind of baseline stuff. So the program itself, whether it's this one or something else, or something else, doesn't necessarily lead to that performance-based outcome. It can, it can be, it can be enhanced, and they all provide good things. We've got a couple of schools doing quite well without any specific programming. So, it's an, Trustee Decker put it well, it's a very complicated picture. You know, and we can do our best to give you what we, God, that's why I really would like to invite the board this coming year to come to each elementary school and hear the story because I think it's really educational for you.
I just want to say that the idea about staff raising their hand or not raising their hand at different schools, I think when we're considering enhancements to programs, it's so important that we remember that schools where there is not a daily need to address trauma in a broad way are more likely to take on something that feels extra, right? So that, and certainly, there has been, there have been times in several of our very low-income schools where things have been very challenging in terms of behavior and referrals and on, like, lots of stress in school, like, this is, these are not secrets. And there are things that we need to be addressing, I think, with a lot of empathy and grace and also with a lot of clarity around the fact that some schools need more resources and support to get where another school whose kids have more resources the day they walk in to start kindergarten have already had. So when we talk a lot about equity, it isn't about everyone getting the same program or even everyone having the access to IB. It's about making sure that everyone can succeed, that we give them all the resources that they need to succeed. And that means that some kids literally need more. And it's probably not the kids who come from more who need more in the first place.
Thanks, Trustee Decker. Trustee Olperson?
I think one of the things in this conversation that keeps coming up is, I think it's not micromanagement, it's the direction of our district. And if we don't say anything, the thing that always sticks out to me is the one school that doesn't have an actual lunchroom. When we had funding, or something should have happened because that's how it went like this. I think that school should have came up with the other schools and had their own lunchroom. And that's just something that's just really similar to this. If that school's doing okay without any special programming, they should be getting funding that's equal to this other school if they don't because they don't have that special funding. I want to see that. I want to make sure all of our schools are equal in terms of the funding. And I think that's important to see where the students, the student number, but also the schools, to see how that funding is for each school in terms of IB, AP, anything like that, STEM, stream. I think it's important for us to see that, that we're equal here and that we have that oversight so that we don't miss having a middle school not have a lunchroom.
And I guess, I guess I'm going to step in. I agree with both what I think you guys are saying, because I've been on the board since this kind of began. And it began with regions, and anyone could see, from Missoula, could see the regions were socioeconomic groups. And I think we're looking at is the remnants of this regionalization. And I think that we need to, the board needs to lead. We need to lead. We need to give the administration direction, and I think we are, and I don't think the administration's being defensive, which I really appreciate that. This is a different group of people, and we live on different parts of town than the people that set up the regions way back when. And so, in a sense, we're kind of deregionalizing MCPS and bringing us back to a whole. So I think we're all correct. I don't think it's out of line for this board to try to give direction, and if we use specific examples, I don't think we're micromanaging. We're simply trying to say, trying to say something that resonates, that gets it across to what we're saying, so. Anybody else? Jeff?
Yeah, I'll just clarify. When I said micromanagement, I didn't even mean that I thought we were micromanaging. I think that, I agree with exactly what both of you just said. It's a direction, we give a direction. But I think that we also know that we, the administration's way more educated than we are in actual implementation of educational services. So I think that us giving a direction is what we're meant to be, and that's what we should do. We should have these lively debates, and then they execute for us, so I agree.
Trustee Mercer?
And I don't want to say we should have something at every school, just to have something at every school, just to like check off a box. But I do think community perception matters, and I think it's toxic for a community, for some members of the community to look around, and right or wrong, but the perception is the haves have more. And I think that's toxic. And where these programs are, at least the visible ones, and maybe there'll be more, but the visible ones are in the schools that are heavily resourced anyways. If Spanish immersion and IB were in other places, it would not give me the heartache it gives me that they are in the most heavily resourced socioeconomic schools. So that's, that's part of where I come from on it. And so, and yes, there's other school, the school I'm most familiar with is doing heroic things right now to deal with some of the things that Grace talked about. And then they need us to come in and say, okay, you've done that, we need to go beyond more than competency. We need you to succeed as well as, as really achieving, so.
Trustee Decker?
I guess what I want to say, and I hope that all the administrators and any staff that are giving up a summer evening to listen to this, I hope they hear that it's so exciting that people love their IB programs that they are part of. That is awesome, and it has taken a lot of work to get there, like, a lot of work, and a lot of commitment, and a lot of effort, and a lot of change, and a lot of growth. It's really great that there are people who feel so passionately about how they get up and do what they do every day, and we love that. And that we, as a board, it feels like, and this is so exciting to me, are like standing like arm in arm with the administration to like face the hard problems that we have as a community and get more of that to more of the kids. That's what this is about, right? Because we live in the community with like the 33rd highest income inequality of any community in our nation. That's like insane. That's not what it was like here 30 years ago. And yet, we're living, like, we are seeing that playing out in how things are in our schools. We're like on the front lines of pushing back against that income inequality with these kind of conversations. And that's really important. And so, celebrating this great work that's happening in some of the schools and saying we want that same level of excellence to be what all of our kids experience. That's kind of what I hope that people are hearing from this push that you're getting.
And I guess I kind of shut down the high school conversation because it's been my experience that once high school's in the room, elementary doesn't get to talk. So I really appreciate that we've had the talk about elementary, and we can talk some more. Our, again, it's an action item, and we're looking at two separate recommendations. And so, if people feel confident we've talked about elementary long enough, maybe we could address that, and then we could move back to the secondary program and have some more discussion about that. Trustee Mercer?
On the high school side of questions, the adjectives of robust and thriving, and my recollection from a month ago was I remember hearing some talk that Hellgate was more stum, was maybe not thriving. Did I, and so, robust to me is less than thriving, and so I just, I don't know what, I'm just trying to, how is IB at Hellgate doing? I guess is my question.
We struggled with the adjectives as well when we wrote it, so I'll just be upfront with you. But quite honestly, when you look at the three high schools and look at the number of kids involved in the programs, that's where I came up with robust. And I would say the same thing even at Sentinel, although we haven't talked about AP a whole lot, but we can give you some hard stats on the number of kids that take at least one AP class over the four years. We can give you those stats for both Big Sky and Hellgate as well. Big Sky has their entire, correct me if I'm wrong, entire junior class taking an IB English?
There's 80%.
80% of their junior class taking an IB.
Taking at least one IB course.
So, I think what, what would be really interesting to look at with Hellgate is they struggled quite a bit with the two programs, and now that they feel, I feel like they're more in line with the direction they're heading with those two programs. But that would be a worthy discussion topic, and you'll notice in the recommendation item that I'm recommending we come back to you this year and talk about some of these issues. But that would be a worthy discussion, is like what percentage of kids actually engage in either an AP or an IB class or both at Hellgate? We think the percentage is pretty high, but, and it's definitely higher than it was, you know, 10 years ago.
The percentage at Hellgate is high. I hesitate to tell you what it is because I haven't looked it up in a bit, but it's a, it's a pretty good number in the IB world and the AP world. So, Dr. Watson's correct, Humanities has kind of taken over their IB program, but they have, they have IB in science and math as well, but they've recently added some more AP courses. That's their department leaders were advocating. So I think it's pretty healthy, and we can get you specific numbers, it's not hard to do.
Okay. Oh, there we go. Trustee of Garris?
Just out of curiosity, if we did, and nobody throw any pitchforks here, but if, if the bridge between AP and IB has shortened, if we got rid of IB in high school and just focused on AP, what are the pluses and minuses? And honestly, what are the revenue pluses and minuses?
Well, I want to be really careful with your question. AP is generally less expensive just across the board, trainings, that kind of thing. But I don't really want to talk about getting rid of IB because we've got parents in our both high schools heavily invested in those programs. So, I think that would be a loss, and a road that we shouldn't go down. I mean, that's my general response to you. Wish I could be more articulate.
And I guess my, I get a comment. I'm so impressed with Big Sky and how IB is universal at Big Sky, and it's really a good fit for all people, you know, if they're interested in ag or health or the other specialty programs, it doesn't seem to be a separate program there. It seems to be the whole school. We even saw some of our Native American graduates, one of those was IB diploma graduate. So I'm really impressed how it's come at Big Sky. And Big Sky, in my knowledge, has not really had a big AP program, so it seems to be a really good fit over there. So I guess that what we want to do today then is we want to approach each of these recommendations separately. If you look at Agenda Item 8, AI, and the first one is elementary recommendation. And so, the recommendation is that the board direct the administration to continue the IB review process in 2122, but broaden the review to include the various academic programming that exists at all eight schools with the goal of better understanding how all schools are meeting the learning engagement goal. Is further recommended that throughout the 202122 school year, the administration will periodically report back to the board regarding this review process with the goal of having final K8 program recommendations in the spring of 2022. During the review process, all existing program will remain status quo. Do we have such a motion from, a move by Trustee Hobbins? Is there a second by Trustee Decker? So now, is there any board discussion on the motion? Willina?
What is periodically?
At least, at least every other month, because we probably need at least four meetings throughout the year, so I look at it as at least every other month.
And if we want more, how would we gain access to more information?
Yeah, that's a great question, and I guess what I would encourage you to consider is after we've given you the first report and you decide, you know, we want more information in this particular area, and we talk about structuring the elementary school visits, I mean, there might be a number of different ways to get all the information you need throughout the year. So I wouldn't necessarily dictate the process right here, right now.
Trustee Mercer?
What is status quo as to Franklin?
So Franklin is, the Spanish program is alive and well at Franklin. I think what, I think what you need to understand is that we have to figure out if Spanish continues on its own or if Spanish continues with IB, that's something we haven't decided yet. That's going to take some time. Want an opportunity to talk with the staff and the parents at that school to decide, to help, have them help decide what the next steps are for Franklin. But for status quo for next year, Franklin remains exactly as it was this year with Spanish intact.
Any other trustee comments? Seeing none, there's a motion on the table and second, do we do public comment? Public comment at this point? Do you see anything, Hatton?
No.
Okay, seeing no public comment, all trustees in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand. And these are just the K8 trustees, which is, and that's unanimous as to all K8 trustees present. The second part of this agenda item then is the secondary recommendation. And it's, again, I'll start it. Therefore, therefore, it is recommended that the board direct the administration to continue to monitor these academic programs, meaning AP and IB, at the high schools and allow these programs to grow based on student needs, available staffing, and adequate budget resources. It is further recommended that the administration, at least annually, report the growth and development of these trustees, of these programs to the Board of Trustees. Is that a motion?
Maybe a tweaked motion?
Go ahead, you can state the motion or your adjustment to it.
I would make the motion that we adopt this recommendation with one tweak, which is to request that student input be gathered during the course of the year because we heard that student input at the high school level was somewhat limited during the focus group process that took place earlier. And so, we would request that student input around IB in high school be part of our updates that we receive.
Okay, so is that the motion, is as stated with your caveat? Yeah. Is there a second? Trustee Hobbins has seconded. Is there any board discussion around the motion? I guess the same question on, we're looking at report annually, is maybe consider reporting a little more frequently on that one? So, seeing no public or trustee comment, is there any public comment on the motion? All right, all trustees, support the motion as stated by Trustee Decker, please signify by raising your hand. And Mike, this does include you. And do you see Mike's vote?
I don't see it.
Oh, or he got lost his connection?
I think he might have lost it.
Okay. Well, that's unanimous as to all trustees present. Okay, well, thank you for that. That's been really helpful, and it's good to feel the board so engaged. So now we have new business, beginning with finance and operations and the multi-district year-end funding from Pat McHugh.
All right, thank you. So this is an item that's similar to one that was presented last year around this time, and it really involves two pieces. So, and both pieces are directed at creating or taking advantage of some flexibilities and efficiencies that are available in state law. And so, within our general fund, which is our main operating fund, we have essentially an obligation to expend that fund entirely by the end of the year. And the flexibilities and efficiencies that I'm talking about would involve some transfer of expenditures to the general fund to, in order, in order to preserve those expenditures and other, or those funds and other funds where they can be carried forward, and then to transfer cash balances into the multi-district cooperative that's also in place. also in place. And what we saw last year and have seen this year is, is, is lower expenditures in areas really related to, to COVID. And, and so, so what, what's being proposed here is, under the recommendation, is, is really two things, is the, the, the transfer of funds, expenditures between funds, and then the transfer of balances to the multi-district cooperative. And the benefit there is our preservation of resources that'll allow for more efficient and, and effective use of those funds down the road. And as an example, last year, and this is something that we'll report out when we report out our year-end expenditures, but last year, oh, I'm sorry, last year, we were able to move some expenditures from our Medicaid direct billing to the general fund, and what that did is allow us to preserve those funds to continue to cover expenditures for staff, and we pay for some special education staff with those direct billing funds. And then we were able to preserve about $640,000 in the multi-district cooperative agreement. And the multi-district agreement is, is the, the equivalent of the inter-local agreement that we entered into with the, the city for the west, for the Lowell Playground and Westside Park. And this multi-district agreement is between two districts, the elementary and the high school district, but both are intended for public agencies to use an inter-local fund to create these efficiencies and operations. And, and so that's what we're talking about with both the elementary and the secondary recommendation. Happy to answer any questions.
Are there any trustee questions for Pat? Trustee Mercer?
Is it clear yet which way the funds are going to flow? And is all of this going to be transferred out in August? Or will some of it potentially sit in the inner local agreement fund? When we do the budgeting in August, will this be put somewhere? I guess it's better put.
Yeah, so it, we won't, we won't re-budget these funds, but we will and can report out these funds. And so I, I want to say last year, we were able to do a, a year-end report out in that August timeframe, maybe not as part of the budget adoption, but, but it takes a, it takes a little bit of time to wind down our year-end, which ends at the end of June, and then we can show all of the expenditures within the general fund and identify where these specific transfers occurred. The, the funds that, that benefited last year include the compensated absences fund, so that fund is only created by transfers with year-end funds from the general fund. And those funds can be used to cover severance obligations for, for staff. And, and it, it creates really savings accounts where they didn't exist before within the general fund. It was one of the ongoing complaints by school districts, and part of the legislative effort at addressing that was, was, well, the multi-district cooperative, and then here utilizing these expenditure transfers to preserve funds. But we, we'll be able to report out exactly where they, all those funds went.
Go ahead.
Tiny bit of twos. I guess I'm wondering, last year, I thought money was transferred through the multi-district agreement from the elementary to the high school. Which way does it look like it was flowing this year?
All right, thank you. I didn't understand that question. So that's, that's correct. So last year, when we budgeted, we knew going into the year that the, the high school district was in a shortfall situation. And so we did use, we had, I'd say about, about 500,000 of those, of funds, inter-local funds that helped balance the high school budget, and that did happen. And this year, and then we were still able to preserve 640,000 of funds in the multi-district. I don't have a good sense this year. I would, I would venture to guess that it's a little more equal between the two districts than it was because we didn't go into this budget year with a, with a large expectation that the elementary would support the high school.
Any other questions for Pat? Is there any, seeing none, I guess questions or discussions? If you have a, okay, so then the recommendation is that the, that the Board authorize administration to transfer, transfer fiscal year 2021 cash balances and expenditures between elementary funds as it deems necessary to ensure the efficient use of school district resources in accordance with Board policy and the district's multi-district agreement with the high school. Is there a motion? Moved by trustee Decker, second? Second by trustee Old Person? Is there any Board discussion on the motion? Any public comment? Seeing none, all trust, all elementary trustees in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand. And that's unanimous as to all trustees present. And I think, Pat, we can just move ahead with secondary as well. So the recommendation is that the Board authorize administration to transfer fiscal year 2021 cash balances in the same manner as before from the secondary side. Is there such a motion? Moved by trustee Abgaris, is there a second? Second by trustee Havens. So all trustees in favor of this motion, please signify by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. Next agenda item is award of bid for the fire system upgrades. I guess that Chief Charlo Jefferson and Paxson. Pat?
All right, so, thank you. The, back in March, the, the Board approved a resolution which identified permissive levies within a, a number of categories, the transportation fund, didn't, didn't approve them, but, but the resolution recognized these estimates. And they are in the transportation fund, the tuition fund, adult ed, and, and building reserve. Within the building reserve, there's a permissive levy to address priority maintenance projects. And within the resolution, we identified the projects that are at Chief Charlo, Paxson, and Jefferson, these fire system upgrades. And so what we're, we would adopt, we will, or the Board will adopt budgets in August, and before we adopt those budgets in August, what we're asking the Board for is permission to use building reserve carryover to, to initiate the funding of these projects. And then when the Board adopts the budgets and the permissive levy for the elementary district in August, those funds will be able to restore the carryover funds used from the building reserve. This is something that, that our auditors have, you know, authorized and recommended as our approach, and it's really necessary to complete the projects over the summer. And that's when we can, when, when the O and M office can, can do the bids, and you'll see the bids are already here in place, and, and put the contractors in place to perform the work. The actual work that would be done here is to replace the, the panels for our fire systems at these three schools. What the other elementary schools have is, is the, a voice evac system. And what that system is, is it, it, it operates through our lockdown system and instead of through our bells and paging system. And so it's got the fail-safe protection in the event of an emergency to continue operations. And the bells and paging use works, but it's susceptible to software upgrades. And so this would be a way to upgrade these systems at these schools, which, which were not upgraded to this degree during the bond projects, to keep them consistent with the other elementary schools in terms of their fire systems. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Trustee Old Person?
What is the carryover amount? The 381, that is not the carryover, or is that the carryover amount?
That's not the carryover amount, and I apologize, I didn't bring that number with me tonight, but we, the, the Board through this efforts that were part of the previous agenda item restored about $400,000 last year of carryover. So I can get that for you next time, but it's in excess of $400,000.
Trustee Havens, did you have a question? Are there any other trustee questions? So do we have a motion on the recommendation as printed in the packet? Moved by trustee Abgaris, is there a second? Second by trustee Havens? Any Board discussion on the motion? Any public comment? Now we're only voting on A, recommendation A. So all trustees in favor, please signify by raising your hand. And that's unanimous as to all trustees present. Recommendation B is really part of the same project of, that the, the trustees grant permission to award the fire system upgrade work at Chief Charlo, Jefferson, and Paxson. Is there a motion? Moved by trustee Abgaris, is there a second? Second by trustee Old Person? Any Board comment? Any public comment? All trustees in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. Next agenda item is to approval to fund the construction and design of the Hellgate High School partial re-roof. Pat?
All right, thank you. And this is a similar agenda item on the high school side. We plan to use permissive levy dollars to repair a part of the roofing system at Hellgate High School. And what, similar to the previous recommendation, but without the actual bids to award, we're looking to use some building reserve carryover in the high school to fund some of the design work for this re-roof project. It's, we would come back to the Board for approval to award the, the bid to the final contractor, but this would just authorize a funding source to get the, the design work moving forward for this, this, this piece of construction, also funded with permissive levy dollars under the, the resolution adopted in March.
Okay, thanks. Are there any trustee questions for Pat? Trustee Decker?
This may be a silly question, and it's probably way above my pay grade to try to even approach this, but I'm wondering, when we're talking about facilities improvements, and especially anything related to safety, aren't there a lot of federal dollars coming to our district that could be potentially used around some of those needs and could potentially save our local taxpayers from this?
That's possible. A lot of the, the dollars that I've seen have been earmarked for water and sewer projects, and, and then some for fiber projects. It's not to say that they, they won't be. And this, this funding source, you're correct, it's, it's part of a permissive levy with matching dollars from the state. So last year, we levied $200,000 in the high school, and then the state kicked in $60,000, and then the elementary, we levied 380, and then the state kicked in about $200,000. So it's part of those priority of projects that, that we have in place. I think there are other projects that would, that would fit. These projects back in March were the priority projects that fit within those dollar amounts. And so if grant funding is available that would meet the need, I know we have projects that we could fit within those, that are, that are boilers, really lots of HVAC projects that, that would fit really within the same, same realm.
Any other trustee questions? Trustee McDonald?
I was just wondering why, like, the, a new roof was not included in when we were doing all the remodeling.
Yeah, so this, the, the roof replacements with the bond projects were the ones that fit within that, that timeframe. So what you'll see really in the next five to 10 years is, is, is roof replacements that'll still come, come up. And they're going to be, the ones we did through the bond projects were the ones that were due to be replaced, and it didn't mean that some wouldn't fall due in the next five years. So the Hellgate project was one of the first, well, the first high school project out of the chute. So back in 2016 and 17, we're now five years into, or past those original bond projects, and we're, we'll, we'll, we'll want to see staggered roof projects. We don't want to have them all due at the same time, and, and so we were careful when we planned those roof replacements not to just do them all. So we did the ones that were due, and, and we'll see more of these roof projects come down the pike.
Thanks. Any other trustee questions? Okay, seeing none, the administration recommends that until the permissive building reserve levy is realized, trustees grant permission to use the building reserve carryover to fund the partial re-roof at Hellgate High School. Is there a motion? Moved by trustee Havens, second by trustee Abgaris. Any Board discussion? Any public comment? All trustees in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand. And that's unanimous as to all trustees present. Now we move into the personnel report. And again, we, we just, this is a routine report. We don't make specific comments, though we can ask questions. So Dave, do you want to go ahead?
It's a monthly, a routine monthly report that carried over from our last Board meeting.
Any trustee questions for Dave? The administration recommends trustee approval of the items on the provided personnel report. Do we have a motion? Moved by trustee Old Person, second by trustee Havens. All trustees in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand. And that's unanimous? Oops, not unanimous.
I abstain. My wife's on the report.
Oh, gracious. Okay, trustee Abgaris has abstained, so that is unanimous as to all trustees present except trustee Abgaris. Our next agenda item is to approve the cooperative sponsorship between Big Sky High School and Loyola Sacred Heart High School for wrestling. Mr. Lodge?
Yeah, Big Sky and Loyola have been in a cooperative wrestling agreement for the past number of years, so this is kind of a routine thing for us. There's usually three to four to five kids from Loyola who join Big Sky, and it's a great opportunity, and it's been a very good relationship. So I called Jennifer Courtney at Big Sky, and she said it's been a very positive experience, and so I recommend that we continue with this agreement.
Any trustee questions for Mr. Lodge? Seeing none, the administration recommends trustee approval of the cooperative sponsorship agreement application with Loyola Sacred Heart High School for wrestling. Do we have a motion? Moved by trustee Old Person, second by trustee Abgaris. Any Board discussion? Any public comment? All trustees in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand. And that's unanimous as to all trustees present. And finally, under teaching and learning, we have one topic, which is the MCPS I Value Working Group, is an information-only item, and Hatton Littman and Dakiya Crigio are going to present. Sorry about that.
That's okay. I, if I could just add a couple of comments before they start, so just to recall for the Board's recollection, we started I Values actually pre-COVID. It's a project that, that was really important to all of us as we start talking more and more about diversity, equity, and inclusion. And Hatton pulled together a group of staff members and community members. Deisha was very much involved early on in, in, in that role. As you, as you may or may not know, Deisha's a member of our Native American Student Services Department, and she has taken on a leadership role with Hatton in facilitating this group. And it culminated this past year, I shouldn't say culminated, it, it, because it's not over, it's never over, but it, it definitely was a culminating event where we had a staff training for nearly, I think it was nearly 60 staff members involved in that training. Hatton will correct me if I'm wrong on that, but pretty exciting stuff. I think it fits directly with- I think it fits directly with several components of our strategic plan as, as the board were, was starting to outline our core values and our core purpose. I think this sort of strategy, this I Value strategy and, and working group definitely fits with our new strategic plan. It will be carried over as a strategy, I know, into our future. With Hatton leaving, I know Deisha has agreed to, to help continue this work. Amy Shadak, who's not on the call tonight, but Amy Shadak, who serves as our federal programs director and central office administrator, administrator will also be involved in the I Values work to help shepherd it forward. So with that, I, I wanted Hatton and Deisha just to kind of give you an update with, with where we're at with this important work.
Thanks so much Superintendent Watson. And I am going to turn it over to Deisha for the majority of this presentation. We collaborated on it, but I really want to first thank her for her leadership in the district this year. And I'm really excited that she's going to continue with this work and we'll both be available for questions at the end.
Thank you, everyone. Yeah, I want to start with gratitude too. I'm really appreciative of being able to do this work this year. We did accomplish a lot. And today wanted to share an update on the work that we were able to accomplish this year and then some of our goals moving forward. Let me see, want to make sure, can you guys see my screen and presenting the slide deck? Okay, awesome. So again, I Value is an acronym. I Value stands for inclusion, validation, action, learning, understanding and equity. As Dr. Watson talked about, this work began in the 2019 to 2020 school year with the intention of creating and leading MCPS and becoming more inclusive of all of our community members. The core purpose of the working group is to establish a leadership group that can help drive some of those decisions. And yeah, we had, we put together a leadership group that I'll talk about in a little bit. But the, the purpose of the group was to come together so that we can specifically have all of our staff and students have a safe, respectful, responsible work and school learning environment where everyone feels welcome. That equity is part of our everyday learning and that we're providing safe and inclusive learning environments. This year, some of our progress was that we, in March and April, launched our inaugural training. So it was an anti-bias training series that I'll definitely go into some detail about. We also put together a data team that looked at specific data points, including attendance, academic data and discipline and behavior. We have an action plan moving forward for what we would like to see next year, including training 150 more staff members, faculty and board in our I Value anti-bias training series. So first, the leadership team was formed with the intention to include those with expertise in anti-racism, diversity, equity and inclusion work and with experience, lived experience. We also wanted to make sure that the MCPS teaching and administrative community was also included. We wanted to make sure that it was a very inclusive and well, a really knowledgeable group doing this work. So we were very intentional on who we invited to set out the leadership team. We wanted to make sure that our group was committed to creating experience and growing the leadership of specific groups within the, the district, including BIPOC people and members of the LGBTQ community, members of various religious communities and individuals who speak different languages other than English or who have come from different countries. We have made a lot of progress this year. Like I mentioned, we worked to identify and take action on known issues while also planning for the future. So we kind of took our work and recognized all the long-term things that we want to work on. But then I have a really awesome eager group that wanted to just get started and continues to want to be actionable and do the work as, as we go. So members of our I Value leadership team include Principal Barbara Frank, Rabbi Lori Franklin, Jamar Galbraith, Dr. Elise Gass, Natalie Jagger, Katie Koster, Hatton Littman, Judson Miller, Jenny Malloy, Jonathan Nath, trustee Old Person, Amy Shadak, Crystal Thompson, Heidi Wallace, Jessica Weltman and myself. The group has been led by, co-led by Hatton and myself. And then for the 2021-22 school year, it will be co-led by Amy Shadak and myself. And then the leadership team has three subcommittees. So those members from the leadership team, most of them are involved in one other subcommittee that will talk about those committees focus on research and data, training and policy. So the data team is led by Katie Koster around Sneeke Elementary School. She gathered academic data and started working through data summary statements to understand where discrepancies are occurring. That data was then shared with principals and cabinet members who were committed to using that data to help inform decision and long-term action planning. The one thing to keep in mind is that certain measures like standardized testing are inherently biased. And so it's really difficult to be able to take this data and say like 100%, this is what's happening. And a lot of what we've found is that there are a lot of gaps. A lot of what we have to collect data isn't sufficient to actually make like really specific statements about our school community. So we, at this point, are looking at a lot of the data and finding what we need or being able to identify what we need in order to make those types of statements. The data team has been really careful to present findings with no judgment. So we're recognizing our own bias as we look at these things and just being intentional about how we are looking at it, analyzing it and presenting it. Katie Koster and Dr. Gass were able to work through a fishbone protocol with the cabinet to look at some of those data points and try to come up with possible causes for outcomes. That was a really awesome process, a lot of really like critical thinking and just creative thinking too, that I think that we all appreciate being able to look at it in that way. And then, yeah, Katie will continue to lead that work and she's looking at attendance and behavior data at this time and they're hoping to gather more, more information that'll help inform decisions. Our training team organized a four-part anti-bias training series this spring. So those sessions were held between March and April of the year. And there were a total of 65 participants who completed the series. And they included teachers, principals, our superintendent and other cabinet members, trustee Old Person, a couple of parents and community members who are closely involved in the MCPS community. The series topics included, there's four sessions and each session had a different trainer. We were really focused on local trainers with expertise in diversity, equity and inclusion, but who also have the advantage of understanding our Missoula community. So we're really fortunate to have experts in our community. And our trainers were Empower Montana, the Indigenous Community Collaborative and Montana Racial Equity Project. So Empower Montana led us through individual identity and perspective where we were able to learn and recognize and understand bias, our own bias and what that looks like and how to recognize that in ourselves. The second session, we talked about more like knowledge building and historical information, creating culturally safe community where we also learned about the impacts of historical trauma and how, how marginalized groups are impacted by that today. The third session about interrupting oppression, we were able to practice strategies to employ when confronted with oppressive behaviors. We actually were able to take some, do some practice and get some example, real life examples on how to interrupt racism and oppression. And then our fourth session, Making a Plan, I feel like we could have gone on and on at that session. Each session was two hours, but there was just so much content and really rich dialogue that I think we could have definitely kept going past those two hours each time. But then Making the Plan was where we worked in grade level teams. So elementary, we're in breakout sessions together, middle school and high school. And we talked about how we could take all of the information we just learned, all the skills we just learned and bring that back to our school communities and what that might look like in practice. The training team is currently working on getting a foundational series scheduled for next year. So our goal is to continue training all of our MCPS staff and definitely want to invite all of the board members to participate in our training as well. And we are also working on like what we're calling the 2.0 series. So with this foundational series, it's really that groundwork of locating like the common language and understanding of issues of oppression and inclusivity. And then the 2.0 series would be diving deeper in the more specific topics. So it could go into like working with Native American students or diving deeper into historical trauma or working with the Black community, the LGBT community, religion. There's just so many, so many other subcategories that we can continue. And just lots of expertise that we can tap into as well. And then finally, the, the third committee is our policy team. So the policy team has really been focused on identifying short-term action items. And the one that came up right away was the need for a incident procedure, protocol response, I think we're calling it. So basically when an incident of oppression or racism or harassment comes up, what we've heard from students and families is that there's an inconsistency or the feeling that those situations are swept under the rug or nothing happens and just feeling like there isn't an actual protocol. So this team worked together with the protocols that we already have and then was informed by best practices from the ADL and other school districts. And we created the incident response protocol that is a step-by-step process that we've shared with principals that, that they can take in dealing with an incident so that there is consistency. One of the first steps up, upfront is getting advocates involved with the students. So there's that feeling of somebody walking through this process with them, whether they're the target of whatever happened or the oppressor or, yeah, on either side, there's an advocate attached to them right away. And then there's communication throughout. The Hellgate High School has piloted the protocol with success. And then there were a couple of incidents at the end of the school year where this protocol was used. And then the I Value team was able to kind of help guide the administrators through that process. And it, it went pretty well, not without kinks for sure. But yeah, it did go very well. And then from the parent perspective, having those advocates throughout the process was really helpful. And then having communication throughout the process of what's happening. And part of the advocates' role is explaining privacy issues and that that's one of the things is that we can't share every detail with the families. And so having an advocate, I think having that comfort of knowing that somebody is on their side sitting through this process and I think it just gives a level of comfort that wasn't necessarily there before through these experiences that can be really traumatic. Yeah, so that is our big thing that we worked on last year. We are looking at updating our language in the school handbooks for the fall. Part of the process also is really focused on restorative justice, restorative practice. So there's a training on restorative practices over the summer for administrators. And then for the 2021-2022 school year, the policy team plans to look at dress code language through the I Value lens as well. And then finally, we launched an I Value webpage on our MCPS website. And you can find information about our mission and goals, our plan and timeline and links to resources. The website is www.mcp.org/ivalue. And it's also, you can find it from our main page under the initiatives menu. And it's linked from the staff links, curriculum and instruction and the Native American Student Services pages on our website. And again, I'd just like to thank everybody for allowing us to come today and share an update. I've been really grateful to do this work this past year and really appreciative of having the support from our administrators to, to move forward with this work and know that it's important for our school district. So Hatton, I don't know if you'd like to add anything or if we can open it up to questions?
I don't think I have anything else to add. I'm, both Deisha and I are open to any questions or ideas and we'll take it from there.
I just, the only thing I would add is just would like to thank trustee Old Person for being part of this process, not only the, on the leadership team, but also in the trainings that we had with staff. I think it, it, it means a lot when the leadership of our district, when the staff can see that the leadership in our district is participating in these events and it's important to us as leaders. I think, I just think it means a lot for our staff. So I just wanted to say thank you to trustee Old Person for giving up her time this year to be part of that process.
Thank you, are there any board comments or questions? Uh trustee Hobins?
First, I just wanted to say thanks for all this, the tremendous work that Deisha and Hatton and everyone involved and, and Wilena. I just wanted to also thanks, thank you all for the opportunity for the board to participate in the trainings next year that you have in anti-bias and anti-racism. Because I think it is incredibly important for us as we're making decisions for the district to check ourselves and make sure that we're doing what we can to educate ourselves in those realms. So appreciate that.
And trustee Mercer?
When you said advocates, who, who are those people?
Yeah, so that part hasn't been completely fleshed out yet. But what naturally happened this last time is that one of the incidents that happened was with a Native American student. And so what naturally happened is that the Native American specialists that that student was already connected with stepped up as the advocates in that situation. We have talked about identifying advocates in the schools who've gone through the I Value training and the need for more training for those advocates to understand the process and kind of, and boundaries and things like that. And then we also talked about students self-identifying their own advocates. That they have people in the schools that they feel safe and connected with and that it would make sense that they connect with those adults and identify them themselves.
Thank you, any, or trustee Decker?
I'll add my thanks for all of the incredible work and for really helping our district start to move in a really positive direction. This is all really exciting. I have a couple of questions around two things. One is from where are you learning as your team like has put all this work together? Like are there school districts around the country that you really look at as a great shining examples of this work being done? And how, how these concepts and, and actions are integrated? And so who, who are we learning from in addition to the really great experts about bias and, and so on? But, but implementing these things in a diverse public school system is its own challenge. And I'm wondering where we're learning about that. And then the other piece that I would wonder about is, I really was glad to hear about some of the things that are being looked at that are not optional and are not internal. So when we talk about like a protocol that will be followed when there's an incident, that to me is really, really important in addition to the kind of interpersonal, like inside work about recognizing implicit bias. Like it matters how we work on ourselves and it matters how we set up systems and structures. So I guess a question I have is how people are being identified to participate in trainings at this point? And if it's like who those early adopters are and who's raising their hands? And, and how the expectation will really roll forward for universal involvement in these conversations by, by everyone in our district? And how the expectation will really roll forward for universal involvement in these conversations by everyone in our district?
Yeah, so the first part, there are a lot of school districts across the country that are taking a stance as anti-racist school districts or anti-racist educators. So we've definitely done research on what those school districts are doing. A lot of them have public information on their websites and procedures and things like that that we've been able to look at. The ADL does a lot of, has a lot of literature that we've looked at. There's trainings through the ADL Western States that we've also looked at. And then of course, we've kind of taken all of that and then used our own expert, local experts and MCPS experts to kind of take that information and think about how that would work in our school district and what that looks like here. And then as far as identifying who has gone to the training, that has mostly been self-identified at this point. There was, at the very beginning of I Value, there was a pretty big I Value cohort, is what we call it. There was probably 45 of the allies that went through this first training who were part of that big I Value planning at the very beginning. And then we saw the need to scale back and have a smaller leadership team. But then we invited those members to be part of our first cohort to go through the training. Then we also wanted to make sure that there were representatives from each school in the district. So we invited each principal in the school or in each school and then asked them to bring along two staff members. So there were teachers, counselors, it was up to the principal to identify. There were more people who self-identified and wanted to participate than we were able to include in the first time. So that was a good problem to have, that people were really eager and interested in taking part in the training. And then Hatton, I saw your hand raised, I don't know if you want to add to that?
We're so simpatico, you already said all the things. But I would add beach transportation also participated. Bob Mitchell, who everyone affectionately knows as Mitch, their operations director, participated. And he's been a member of the I Value cohort since the beginning, which has been really amazing as well. Members of our cohort also identified, this was last year, but we'll see how it rolls out, a desire to have school resource officers and athletic directors especially participate in training. So those are two other areas. And I also just want to clarify too, we had certified and classified members participate in the training. Thanks, Deja.
I actually, I have a question. How have you included the Seeley Lakes community?
Seeley had a team participate. This training occurred on Zoom, which really enabled them to be on a level playing field, excuse me, with our colleagues so that they weren't the only virtual attendees. I think that's something that we've learned and we'll have to continue to refine, especially now with our new principal, Sean Holmes, about how he'd like to see members of his staff participate in trainings that occur in Missoula.
Thanks. Any other trustee questions? Well, thank you very much for the presentation. And please let us know kind of in advance what opportunities are available to trustees to join the trainings. Because be real, you know, don't be subtle. We need to be told. Thank you. And then our final, our final agenda item then is a board item. And it is information and action. And this is, the board will review and take action on Dr. Watson's contract. So the contract term is attached and it contains all the terms and conditions in the contract. And I hope you've all had a chance to read that. This contract has been in place since Dr. Watson started with this. And see, I'm being intentionally vague. And it's been reviewed by our attorneys and his own, he's also had another attorney look at it. So we're confident in the content of it. I think at the top, it should say entered into this 22nd day of June 2021. And that, I guess, will get added after we vote. So the terms and conditions are here. It's not, superintendent's contract is a public document. The superintendent's evaluation is not, it's a private evaluation. So if anyone has any questions, and Rob, if you're not comfortable with the question, just let us know. So does anyone have any questions or did you want to add anything, Rob? Okay, seeing none. So we'll have a motion, let's see. We do public comment after the motion, right? Okay, so do we have a motion from, and Rob is the trustee of both districts, so we'll just, we just have one contract? So, I'm sorry, I'm lost. Do we have a motion to approve Dr. Watson's contract and terms? Moved by trustee of Garris. Everybody, we're all moving for that one, good job. Second by trustee Hovins. Any board discussion? We did, everyone completed an evaluation in the winter and Marsha gathered those up. And so they're on file. Again, it's not public, but we'll go through that each year. So if there's no board discussion, is there any public comment? Okay, seeing none, all trustees in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as all trustees present. Thank you, Dr. Watson.
Thank you for the opportunity to continue, I appreciate it.
All right, and then we're adjourned.